These inclusion requirements. And are sort of, you know, all trying to figure it out. We have done, we've done a little bit of work, basically on the, on the research end. For a number of communities, starting probably two years ago, we helped Branford wrestle with this question. When they had a hotel developer who had, you know, an approved site. For a hotel that was never built, wanting to convert it to apartments. And the town wanted to, as part of their, you know, sort of affordable housing efforts, require some of that to be set aside. And so we had, my, my partner, Mike and I had done a bunch of research on what other communities have been doing. And Canaan and Greenwich and, and I'm sorry, I should say New Canaan and Greenwich and some other communities have established some stuff. With varying levels of, of buy-in and varying levels of success. Generally speaking, developers have preferred to take the fee and lieu option. And it's a real question about what that fee would be. And so what we, we did, and Jamie, I, did you share this around with the?
Yeah, we got that.
This, the memo that we prepared. So we've been working with the town of Mansfield, so I, I won't. Go into too much detail on this, but the town of Mansfield is looking to do, you know, put in place a, a. Inclusionary zone requirement as part of their, as part of their overall affordable housing efforts. And it's, it's basically because it's development-based, you know, you, you, you are reliant on. Proposals by developers to build new units to trigger this. You, you're basically using, you have to take a market solution. Because you're basically requiring developers to set aside units at lower than market rates. And, and you know, if you're too punitive, I wouldn't say too, I was maybe too aggressive or, or assertive about your. Set aside percentage. If it's, you know, twenty, thirty, forty percent that needs to be set aside, you're going to discourage your developers. From building in town because you're basically requiring too much that makes the project not pencil out. And I would, I'm certainly sure that Bob, with his development experience, would be able to, to verify that and. You know, and, and then, you know, if you're only setting aside maybe five units or five percent. You know, possibly you're not doing much really to, to really make a difference. And, and, you know, you may not, you may not be actually, actually capturing what you could. So to a certain extent. What we've been advising, what we advise Mansfield is to go up to fifteen percent. Because Mansfield is, right now, it's a very hot market for multifamily, which is primarily a housing market for college students. To pick that number, you know, increase from their ten percent and see where it goes. I think there's no, there's no magic number. The number will vary based on town to town and based on market conditions. And I think it's something that towns should consider. Like a, like a thermostat that they can dial up and dial down based on, based on market conditions. The, the trickier part beyond that, you know, beyond that pegging that percentage would be if you do create. A housing trust fund to, to figure out what that formula will be. And, and I think that's going to be largely an iterative process too, because if, if developers are like. Ready to jump at the, at the fee and lieu, you know, if you set it low at, you know, fifteen or twenty thousand dollars a unit or something like that. And they're happy to pay it, chances are that means it's too low. So I think, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to discourage developers from, from moving to town. But you also don't want to, you know, welcome nothing but, you know, elite high-end properties. The exclusion of affordability in town. You know, the, the bottom line here is be aware that it's a tool and, 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 and. If you put it in place, I would expect that you should plan on repeated adjustments to it. Based on conversations with developers, based on market conditions and, and, you know. Treat it as a living, as a living document, a living requirement. So that's, that's my very broad overview of that and happy to have a conversation about it.
Great, thanks Sean. Anybody have questions they want to ask John?
I just wanted to ask about multifamily versus single family. Because Guilford is zoned like ninety percent residential and we don't have a lot of multifamily housing. But it is something that we want to encourage in some areas. But when you think about the cost per unit, I mean fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, nobody would build an affordable unit. Like if you just think about the cost per square foot of something i- i- in a small, single family. It's, it's not gonna work out. Did you? Do you have something to say?
And I think, yeah, no, so, so that's, that's, you know, partially about recognizing your market. But there are other tools that if, if you're, if the end goal is to generate more affordable units. And you, you don't have a lot of multifamily or, or nobody's like putting out there, you know, twenty, thirty, forty unit complexes. Another tool could be density bonuses. If those additional, you know, so you get, you know, whatever in, in the zone, you get, you know, two units as of right, four units as of right, or by special permit, that's your cap. But if you add, you know, basically you could say every affordable unit you add on top is free, you know, like. Assuming, assuming the, the septic system worked out for you. It's, you do it basically more on the incentive end. Rather than, rather than sort of doing this as a, as a requirement or a required fee. So that I think, you know, depending on your circumstance, other tools might be more appropriate like that. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyway, so if people don't have questions, I would, and I don't want to, you know, hijack your agenda, Jamie, but I would be very curious to hear what, what Bob has to say.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah, let's keep going. Thanks, John.
Sure, so, so I, I agree with a lot of what John was just saying, and, and I can talk to you a little bit about personal experience. I, I guess first thing I'd like to just mention is that affordable housing is not a new problem or lack of affordable housing. I grew up in North Branford, so I'm just around the corner from you, live in Wallingford now. And the reason I ended up in Wallingford was back in nineteen eighty, I was looking for my first home. Couldn't find anything in Northford, North Branford that I could afford. So I came to Wallingford because they had multifamily houses here, and I bought a two-family way back then, and that was my first investment. And that's how I got started in my real estate business. But it was, it was kind of out of necessity that I moved to, to this town. So, and that was, you know, again, back in nineteen eighty, so it's, it's not a, a new problem. And so I just want to kind of point that out is I, I've sort of lived this in my own personal life. I, I just want to touch on a couple of things. The, the fee is sort of an interesting question Mary Jo, Joe raised. And that is that most of these projects are involved with getting more density than you would typically get under standard zoning. So you're trying to weigh the additional units and what the value of those additional units are. And how much we as developers can afford to pay or, you know, contribute for the affordable units. And you can, you know, there's math you can do, honestly, okay, we got next number of units. And they're going to have to offset the cost of these less expensive units that we're going to discount. And how, how much is that going to cost us on a, on a daily, weekly, annual basis and so forth? And so you could do the math projections out. I, I personally can't, but I mean, you know, you could do the math calculation to come up with that. Of what a reasonable one is, but it is a little bit difficult. Because it, it's hard to say if you were only going to get five units on a property and you get a six one. Well, then you offset it by that, but if I've got, if you give me ten and I need to give you two, that calculation changes by how many you're going to offer us as an. Density bonus. Let me see, where do I want to go with this? I, I can talk to you a little bit about eight thirty G. I just finished a project. Or I'm just, just wrapping up, I'm just renting the final units, a thirty-six unit project under eight thirty G. These are attached townhomes in four buildings, so I got eight, nine and ten unit buildings. And they're sized, they're, they're very typical to what you would see for, for, for sale or for rent product. And I kind of intentionally did that because I didn't want to compete with all the apartment projects that are being built, which are common hallways with elevators. And I felt that there was a need for people that want a little larger unit. Private entrances, their own private outdoor space, storage, larger units, that sort of thing. So that was kind of my target market and, and that's exactly what we, we got is people that I could choose where they wanted to live. And as part of that project, and this is on about a three acre parcel, happen to have water sewer, which I know is not readily available in Guilford. So I mean, that's, that's obviously a consideration. But it's about a three acre parcel, I got thirty-six units on it and have eleven affordable units. And one of the things I learned early on is that managing the affordable units as a for rent project is much more difficult than a for sale project. If we do a project that's for sale, I basically have to discount that unit to qua, to meet all the qualification needs. And I just need to find one buyer that qualifies for that unit on a particular day and time. And once I sell that, I'm sort of out of the picture, I'm done with it, and I go build my market rate and hopefully make money on those. And they're responsible for when they want to resell it down the road. In a for rent project, it becomes a little more complicated for me because I needed to find a qualified tenant on day one. And then I have to re-qualify them every year to make sure that they still qualify. So there, there's actually, I should back up, there's two aspects of qualifying. First, you have to determine what the rent is, and that's based on area median income and what thirty percent of that would be. So in my case, and it's probably not that different in Guilford, you might be a hair higher. But I'm able to rent my two-bedroom units for twelve hundred, just over twelve hundred dollars for a sixty percent unit. And sixteen hundred for an eighty percent unit. My market rate units are renting between twenty-two and twenty-four hundred dollars a month. So that just kind of gives you a little bit of scenario of, you know, what the differential is between the various units. So first I have to determine what that rent is, and that's obviously you take the, the thirty percent again, area median income. I'm sorry, the eight sixty or eighty percent area median income, the thirty percent. Value of, of what you're going to pay for right now, you have to make an deduction for utility costs. So we've done all that and we've come up with the amount. Now we have to find someone that's qualified for that. And so obviously there's a maximum limit that says, in this case, and I don't have them off the top of my head, maybe sixty thousand dollars was the maximum you can make for sixty percent unit. And somewhere around eighty thousand dollars for an eighty percent unit, and I may have the numbers off a little bit. So we know what the maximum is, but there's really no minimum. Other than what we're willing to accept for a tenant. And, and, and there's a kind of a delicate balance there, because what I don't want to do is find someone that makes twenty thousand dollars. They would qualify for the unit, but realizing that if they're paying twelve hundred or sixteen hundred dollars a month. Once they pay that mortgage, I'm sorry, that rent, they would have no ability to pay for clothes and food and all, all the other necessities in life. So we sort of artificially set a, a bottom limit and we base that on about thirty cent, thirty percent of their income. So we in our mind said that we need to find someone that makes around fifty thousand to sixty. To qualify for the sixty percent unit and between sixty-five and eighty for the eighty percent unit. And then that was, as far as I know, there's nothing that says we can't do that, but we're, again, we're trying to find someone that is going to be able to afford that. To, to give you another way of looking at this, if someone were making a million dollars a year, their thirty percent income is very easy to meet. Because they have a whole lot of discretionary money to spend on all those other things, but when you get in the lower threshold of people's income. There's not a lot of money left over for those other necessities in life, so we really had to kind of strike a balance. So, so we, we were very fortunate, we found some, you know, really great tenants and, and the units are done identically. And I just mentioned, our planning zoning commission was very flexible on this. One of my concerns was we move a tenant in that's qualified today. And they get a five percent raise, they either get a new job or something happens, their in, their family income goes up a little bit. Next year, when we go to qualifying, they may not qualify. So now we'd have an option of asking them to leave, they'd have to go find another place to live because they're not qualified for their affordable unit that they might be in currently. Or they might move from a sixty to an eighty percent. So what we, we're able to work out with the planning zoning commission here in town was if we have a second sixty percent tenant that now is not eligible. But has to move to an eighty percent, they could stay in the unit at eighty percent and our next available unit would become a sixty percent unit. And that just seemed more fair. I mean, the other option we would have had, let's say, take a different way, eighty percent unit, and now they have to go to a market rate. We'd have to actually move them next door, which kind of made no sense at all. So the risk the town took on is that we don't have a vacancy, so we may be short, we may not have eleven units on a given day. There could be a timeframe where we only have nine or ten, depending on what our unit mix is and how the turnovers happen. But this seemed like a reasonable thing for us and, and the town agreed that that was a, a flexible way of, of providing the affordable housing. And not putting people out on the street because they're having to be making some progress in their, you know, payer, you know, their job. Promotions and that sort of thing, so I thought that was, that was really good. The qualification process besides that is then how do we qualify the individual tenants? And this is something, we don't have a lot of units and we don't have anyone in our business that knows how to do that calculation. It's, it's, it's a very complicated process to determine their income and what, what items within their income qualify. Like child, child care. Obviously salary, but even assets, you could have some significant assets, but not a lot of income. And those play into the calculations. So we actually, and I think Peter mentioned, he's on the Guilford Housing Authority, I'm on the Wallingford Housing Authority. As a board member, and I asked the housing authority if they would be interested in managing that process for me. And they actually told me they didn't want to do it because there were so few units and it was too much, too difficult for them. They couldn't charge me enough to justify the time they would invest to do that. I was fortunate to find a for-profit developer who works on the affordable housing side. Who had a person in their, in their office, a staff person that kind of moonlighted and do this for me, and their company was fine, they knew they, she did this for us. And we were able to pay her a fee to do this, so she's able to, once we qualify a tenant that they fall within what we think is the proper range. And we like their other qualifications as a tenant. We then turn it over to this third party to administer the affordability aspect of it. So she's able to then talk to them about their income, you know, what their jobs are, get, get copies of pay stubs and tax returns and all those kinds of things. So we don't get involved in that at all. And they come back to us and say, either the person is qualified and, and which qualification, it may be sixty or eighty percent. And I just lay that out because one thing you have to be careful of is not to overburden, especially on smaller project. If you're doing fifty, a hundred units and they're going to have a large number of units. It's a lot easier to find someone that's going to be able to do that, or they may even have internal people. Like you said, I, I didn't have that ability with only eleven affordable units. And I was fortunate to find someone that is able to help us with that process. But it is a bit of a, a challenge. And we've never discussed the possibility of paying a fee in lieu of, and I would have given some thought to that. Just to avoid that situation, it would have been more of just the difficulty of managing it, not that I didn't want to have affordable units. I guess I, I, that's kind of all I wanted to tell you about that project. No, actually, there's one other thing, I'll tell you a little bit about that while we're just on the eight thirty G. So obviously you're, you're requiring, or you're asking the developer to build these additional units and they're offsetting the value or the cost of that. With their market rate units. And some of you may know, there's been a lot of talk up at the Capitol this year about affordable housing and, and all those things, and in particular rent control. So think back that I made this deal with my town two years ago to build eleven affordable units and they would allow me to build thirty-six units in total. And my market rate units are going to offset my costs for these affordable units. Agreed to make that deal, everything sounds fine. Now, two years later, legislature is thinking that maybe we're charging too much and our rents are going up too high on our market rate units. And they're going to try to cap those for us. And all of a sudden I'm sitting there going, geez, that's not the deal I made two years ago. And this may not be the best investment I've ever made. So you can imagine, there are a lot of people in my industry that aren't real happy about this whole idea. While we can sympathize with the need for, you know, affordable housing and not seeing people's rents go up ten and twenty percent. And there were some big increases, I mean, everybody knows our costs have gone up, energy, utilities, taxes, insurance, up and down the list. We've all, we've all experienced inflation in our own lives. But if you look at historical numbers, the typical rents don't go up a real lot, you know, they, they usually maintain kind of inflationary level. Which of course inflation goes to ten percent plus, rents go up accordingly. So I, I just want to lay that out there that, you know, when you hear people fighting back against it, there may be some legitimate reasons, at least from my perspective, obviously. And I'd love to have a discussion about that, because I'm sure there are other people that think that we need to really restrict that. So maybe I'll stop and take a breath and let David or someone else ask some questions or, or talk a little bit.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody want to ask some questions?
I have a question, Bob, this is Sandy. So you built thirty-six units and eleven of them are sixty or eighty percent. That seems like a lot. Are you making some money? I mean, are you clearing your expenses and making some money on your investment?
Yes, in this situation, you know, we knew going in, this, this property was actually previously approved by a former property owner. He was, he was actually a contractor, it was his contractor's yard, and he's since, well, he retired and since passed away. And he had gotten it approved for a, a three-story apartment-style building, common hallways, elevators. And it was just not something I was really interested in, I, I primarily built single-family houses. So I decided to make the conversion to the, to the townhouse, townhome style buildings. Because the construction is a little bit different, the codes are a little bit different for it. The units are larger and they were expensive and we did build unfortunately through the height of the, the run-up, as you probably all have heard, the lumber prices went through the roof eighteen months ago. And we had to make some decisions at that point, do we slow or stop construction or do we continue on? And our decision was to continue to build, even though our lumber prices did go crazy. But my fear was that other costs were not going to come back down, lumber has since come back down to kind of more normal levels. But a lot of other costs are still sky-high and probably not going to return to those numbers, so I think we made the right decision. But I knew going in kind of how the, the math was going to work out. And while my costs went up, also my income did go up more than I probably initially projected, just based on, on market rents. And obviously it's a supply and demand market, we, we based our, our rental rates on, on what the market will bear. And so we are getting more money than I would have expected four years ago when I was doing my original projections on the market rate units. And so yes, we are making money. I'd always like to make more, I'll never, never disagree with that, I am a for-profit builder, that's my goal. But I also do have a, a spot in my heart that says I, I like affordable housing, I'd much prefer to be building lower-priced products. In, in my business in general, than build a million-dollar homes, it's just what I enjoy doing. So, yeah, but it, but it is a, a math calculation everybody has to do, under eight thirty G, the thirty percent is kind of the standard. But again, that gives you complete flexibility really to almost build whatever you want. As long as you can meet the health and safety needs of the community that you're proposing. And this was a friendly eight thirty G, Wallingford's been very good about not having anybody come in and force an eight thirty G project on them. And you, and you've all heard the horror stories of people that show up with some crazy idea of huge densities. And use it kind of as a, a stick to, to beat the commissions or the town into submission to build something that nobody really wants. And Wallingford's been very good about being able to negotiate with developers and come up with a solution that gives them. The return they need to make and, and create as much affordable housing as possible. And I would encourage you to try to do that. Then you can, you know, you can still be involved in how much landscaping, how much parking, you know, that we, that we meet all the other things that are important to a community. And not just get something, you know, shoved down your throat.
Thank you.
This is Larry, just to clarify the eight thirty G. So if it's an eighty percent unit. And the rent is, is thirty percent of that eighty percent? Or it's thirty percent of the income of the person that occupies that apartment?
Okay, let me make sure I explain it right, so it's, it's eighty percent of the area median income is how you determine what the rent can be. So you take the area median income. That's what you need to qualify for the unit. And then you take thirty percent of that, which is what their housing cost should be. So you don't want to exceed that thirty percent of that. That value, that amount.
Okay, so if I understood what you were saying, if someone's income was fifty percent, was fifty thousand. And the eighty percent was really eighty thousand. You would say that income is too low, because it's not thirty percent of their, it's not thirty percent of their fifty thousand dollar income. It's thirty percent of the eighty thousand.
Yeah, David, why don't you jump in? You, you do this all the time, so you can explain this probably more clearly than I can.
Well, you know, I don't know, Bob, you're pretty good, but let, let me give it a try. So, so the point is, let's say, Larry, that sixty percent of the area median income is sixty thousand dollars. So that's, that person's making five thousand dollars a month. Thirty percent of that person's income can be spent in a maximum to live in one of those sixty percent units. So that's fifteen hundred dollars and that's where Bob would have to put the rent level. Under the statute, somebody making less than fifteen hundred dollars or making less than five thousand dollars a month or sixty thousand dollars a year. Could live in that unit as well, but the maximum that a person living in that unit could make is five thousand dollars a month. For sixty thousand dollars a year, that's if sixty percent of the area median income was sixty thousand dollars. If it was higher than that, you do the monthly income and then take thirty percent of the monthly income and that's where Bob would have to set the. The, the rent level. Got it?
Yeah, it's two, it's two different calculations, one is what the maximum rent can be for the unit. It's not really tied to what the percentage of income is for the actual tenant. Because it's the area median income versus the tenant, so the tenant could make. Right, right near the very top end of that, or it could be even lower, but they might be spending, if they were made less than, in David's case, less than five dollars. They'd made four thousand dollars a month, they might be spending more than thirty percent of their income for it, but the unit would be based on thirty percent of the area median income.
I see, okay, now that, that clarifies it for me.
And can I just ask, because I'm a, sure, but if you have a rental, like this whole, like this unit might be sixty, might be eighty, might be market rate. Is that a normal thing or is that something that you worked out with the town? Because I sort of understood it as like this unit will be the one kind of thing.
Yes, so, so that is something we worked out with the town. And sometimes they, they do want you to specify which units are going to be affordable. And you, and you say, you know, units one, five, twelve and seventeen are going to be the affordable units and at what rate? And that can sometimes be done. But the problem with that is, again, somebody then exceeds the limit. We have to vacate that unit and that just didn't make sense to us, so that's why we were able to negotiate that ability to just move units around. Now, all our units, actually, I shouldn't, shouldn't say this, we have a few units that have garages. But all of our units, the, the actual inside square footage and the finishes are identical. So you can't, you can't walk into one and say, oh, I'm in an affordable unit, next door you walk in another unit and it looks different, or it's got a different layout or a different square footage. Our units are exactly the same all the way across, so we can mix and match and interchange them without a problem. But you can do it, it can be done either way, and probably our way is a little bit unique, normally they are dedicated. And if you were to do something for sale, then obviously that unit has a deed restriction on the actual unit. That was sold, sold and marketed, and then that next buyer would have the same limitations for the timeframe, whatever that thirty, forty years or so forth, that it, it might be restricted.
Right, so did you also, are you doing any of the management of these units or is that all a third-party person?
Yeah, so, so actually my two children are in the business, so they actually manage the day-to-day operation. So, so we manage, my, my daughter does all the showings, she qualifies the person. You know, does all the background checks and make sure they're qualified other than financially for the unit. And then if they feel that they may qualify for an affordable unit, then we send them to the, the, the other side of the approval process to qualify them financially. And then they come back and say, yes, that person's qualified for a sixty percent unit and eighty percent unit, or no, they're not qualified, but they're welcome to have a, a market rate unit. But the qualification that we go through is identical regardless of income levels.
Mary Jo, I'd also add that there are firms that do the qualifying and the management. Homing, for instance, which is run by a guy named Brett Hill, they do a whole shebang. And again, it's a fee and it's a fee that a builder like Bob would have to, you know, kind of include in his equation on whether this would work or not. But, but there are ways to make sure that that, you know, is taken care of, that the property is maintained and the people are qualified.
Because I would think that would be popular, like, because to manage a rental that's affordable seems like it would cost you something.
Yeah, so we do pay a fee for that initial qualification, but, but now the customer, really, once, once, once a tenant moves in. They don't go back to the qualifying on the financial side when they have a problem with a, a neighbor or a parking issue or a trash issue or. You know, an electrical problem or, you know, whatever it might be, they would still call us just like they would, you know, any, any other tenant would call us and say, I've got this problem, can you take care of it? And we're on call and, you know, if you don't like the way the snow plowing's being, well, it's no snow this year, so we did a really good job. We did a really good job, not didn't get a single complaint this year on snow.
We're gonna start looking in Guilford, Bob. I'm gonna encourage you.
We'd love to do that. We'd be happy to, but but I'm not here to try to that's not my motivation.
Jimmy, every question, how do you determine an eighty percent versus a sixty percent? Why would you, what benefits do you get if you rent a sixty percent versus an eighty?
I don't think I can answer that question. I feel like David and Bob could give a better answer to that.
That's part of this eight thirty G requirement, that thirty percent are affordable, fifteen at sixty and fifteen at eighty.
Okay, that's within the statute. Okay, thank you.
Before we go to David, I was just wondering, Bob, you know, this notion of flexibility, not just in sort of the movement of the units, but, you know, some of the other things we're talking about in addition to fee and lieu are tax abatements, or, you know, going through with a site plan rather than a special permit. Or, you know, what are some of the other things that kind of make the numbers work for you? I mean, I think we have eight dash thirty G as something that, you know, as a town with two point six percent of our housing stock is deed restricted, we're still, you know, open to, but we're looking at maybe, you know, affordability between ten percent and fifteen percent. And and how does that kind of flexibility in play help you as a developer?
You bring up a couple of excellent points. I mean, one is that ten percent requirement was just a negotiation at the legislature many years ago. And it was probably to get enough votes. Somebody probably wanted twenty-five percent, and somebody thought five percent was enough, and they settled on that that number, ten percent. And 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 my hope would be that someday we all make the ten percent, and then we raise the bar.
Yeah.
That that that's really the reality of it. We should be a hundred percent affordable. I mean, obviously, that's not a goal that we'll ever reach in our lifetime, and maybe no one will ever reach. But there's no reason why we shouldn't all strive for that. And while we're talking primarily about, you know, inclusionary zoning here, I always look at affordable housing in two two frames of mind. One is there's a capital A affordable, which is, you know, meets the statutory requirements. And then there's a small a affordable, which we should all be striving for. And that comes down to, you know, what can we do in all aspects of the approval process? Minimizing special permits and site plan reviews and and the timeframe it takes to get through the approval process. And the more certainty you can create for a developer to come in and know that they're going to get their approval, and they're going to get it in a timely manner, encourages them to come and do that kind of stuff. So anything that you can do to to shorten the timeframe, I know some of the stuff is statutory as far as, you know, public hearings and permitting process that you really can't do, but we're working all the time at the Capitol to try to streamline that. And there were some recent changes to the timing over the last five years, and and there's probably still room to to improve on that. You also asked about the tax consequences, and I actually had a very good sit-down with our assessor. And I explained to him that obviously we have market rate units, and because they're all the same, it made it very easy for him to evaluate what the value of a market rate unit is valued at, based on the income and so forth. And I said, well, now we have income which is reduced on these other units, so I would expect that I would pay a lower tax rate on those units, and he completely agreed, and we were able to negotiate a a fair number that that he could live with and I could live with. Sorry about that shaking on my screen. I don't know what that's all about. But it it worked out very well, but yes, there there was a reduction because of my reduced income that they felt that that was an appropriate number to come up with to to reduce the value of those units.
Great, thanks, Bob. David, you wanna?
Yeah. Jump in a a on a few things. I mean, just on this latest point, I I know that my town, West Hartford, has often been willing to relax parking requirement for developers, because every square foot of land that you can free up from a parking space can be used by a developer for more housing, especially if you're going to allow them to pile it up on top. And and needless to say, I've seen towns, Glastonbury just bought land that was available. And then we'll sell it back, I'm sure, or lease it back, I'm sure, to a developer at a reduced rate, so that'll cut his land costs. That goes to Sandy's question earlier about eight thirty G. Eleven of whatever it is, thirty-three or thirty-four units, a lot? Yeah, I mean, that's the requirement, thirty percent. Bob was able to do it because I'm sure he was able to get the land at a price that could do it. And you'll see that in a number of eight thirty G developments. The land was zoned commercial or industrial, and zoning commission agreed to change zoning. And so and and Volk was able to get the land because it was not initially residentially zoned for a lower price. So, I mean, there are a lot of factors in in how a developer works. And, you know, there are really very, very capable ones like Bob who know how to make it work out. That I I did want to just kind of underscore for you something that John said, and I think Bob also said, which is that an inclusionary zoning ordinance, I think, is best to be flexible. And also to know that you don't have to carve it in stone. What you create now can be changed. And if you find that the market will allow a developer to do a larger set aside, not ten percent, maybe twelve percent or fifteen percent, great. Right now, the market is hot and will stay hot for multifamily housing. Rental prices since two thousand nineteen have gone up twenty-seven percent statewide, and that's huge. And that's why Bob, to answer your question, Sandy, is able to, and I'm very happy for him because he's a wonderful guy. He can make more money on those market rate units now, and that helps him to, you know, the term is internally subsidize those affordable units. And and that's great. And I would say in a town like Guilford, that does not have a lot of multifamily housing and that needs multifamily housing. A developer, especially a capable one like Bob, could get plenty for the market rate units and probably afford to make, you know, set aside of ten, twelve, fifteen percent. Point is, do you know exactly what that percentage ought to be right now? Probably not. But just because you you set it at one point now doesn't mean you can't change it down the road. I don't think that the rental market is going to come down anytime soon. I mean, I was just hearing about San Francisco, the rental mark rental prices would go down there because it's a ghost town now. But Guilford is not about to be a ghost town. And so any developers that that you bring in will make plenty on market rate units. Another point I wanted to make about about the fee and lieu, the towns have run into problems because they've set the fee too low and have not adjusted it as costs have gone higher. Because essentially what you're doing is you're asking Bob to pay you a fee that will be used by some future developer. Now, I generally have not liked fees and lieu. Because basically what you want, I mean, part of of what you want to do is you want to create units that your workers, your teachers, your police, your firefighters, other people can afford, and you want them to live in town. But you're also looking, I would assume, I don't want to put, you know, words in your mouth or ideas in your head. You you're looking for that integration. You want the paralegal to live down the hall or down the block from the lawyer or the nurse from the doctor, and everybody gets along. And 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 you have a mix of your society. A fee and lieu allows a developer to make all market rate units and he pays you some dough. That's not bad, and frankly, I would now argue that you should probably have a fee and lieu because it provides you the flexibility to allow that in certain cases. So you may have a location where a developer, you know, it's really going to be market rate units. It's a spot, you know, that that, you know, where a developer is just not going to want to do that, and and you may want the housing for other reasons for upper-income people, and, you know, they have to live too. And and the town needs all sorts of people and all sorts of housing. But if you do that, you have to be sure that you're revisiting the fee and lieu frequently to make sure that the the money you're getting is going to help, really help the developer down the, you know, down the road. The other third option in most inclusionary zoning ordinances is off-site to allow the developer to build the mark the income-restricted units on another site. Well, again, that requires another site, and it gets away from the integration at that property, which, again, I, you know, I think you you're probably looking for. So, but again, that's kind of what I'd leave you with. I would say that whatever you do, you can change, and whatever you do, I think you want flexibility to to, because you don't know what what proposals you're going to get. And and the last thing I'll tell you is, the ironic thing about eight thirty G, and Bob knows this, is that the thirty percent set aside is too high. It's too high for a lot of developers in a lot of locations because the land cost, to say nothing of the labor and materials cost, is a lot. And and, you know, if if you want to know the legislative history, the reason it's thirty percent is because it's the housing app, my housing advocate friends back twenty-five years ago made a big mistake. The people who didn't want affordable housing said, you know what, let's raise the percentage, which was originally twenty percent. Let's raise it to thirty. We'll get more affordable housing. And my housing advocate friend said, that's a great idea. We'll get more affordable housing. Well, guess what? God bless. Because it kept a lot of developers from being able to do it at thirty percent. We would be better off at twenty or twenty-five percent, and Bob, I'm sure, will back me up on that. So the bottom line is, I always say a hundred percent of half a loaf is better than, I mean, hundred percent of half a loaf is better than zero percent of none. So if I were you, I wouldn't reach too high because you don't want to set a percentage so high that it's going to keep developers from coming into Guilford. I don't think you have to worry too much about it, because like I said, the market is such that any good developer is going to be able to get a lot for the market rate units right now. But, you know, I would I would try to find a middling place, and you can change it in a couple of years if you find that it's not the right one.
Can I ask an opinion? The my Guilfords representative in the legislature, and I've heard a couple of others, say, well, it's time to revise eight thirty G. And if they were to do that, what do you think would be a good percentage? Or said another way, if I'm going to lobby my representative, what would you advise me?
You know, I have my own ideas on that. I I, like I said, I would lower the percentage from thirty to twenty-five. And again, you know, that could change, but, you know, most people don't want to tinker with eight thirty G, because once you start tinkering with it, you change it. And and honestly, you know, you guys are great in Guilford because you really want to change and you want to add homes for people who need it. Believe me, there are towns in this state that would not have a single income-restricted unit if it wasn't for eight thirty G. So if the answer is fooling around with eight thirty G, I would generally say no. But to answer your question, Larry, I would probably lower the percentage, and I might I might extend the period of time for a second moratorium to a little longer to give towns the opportunity to earn enough points to earn a succession of moratoria. Because that's really what you can get to. Most towns that are under ten percent, particularly those in like the two and three percent range, are unlikely to ever get to ten percent. But you don't have to. What you ought to do is just have what you're doing, which is an include inclusionary zoning ordinance. So you'll add enough units and score enough points every four or five years that you can get succeeding moratoria.
I have a question. We've been talking about rental units and apartment-type buildings. The town's also looking at maybe doing, you know, a lot, some lot development or a four, building forty houses and making some of those affordable. How does that work? And have you had any experience doing a development like that?
Well, Bob probably has. I know I, Bob can talk more about this, but a friend of both of ours, a woman named Liz Burn, a very talented developer, bought a property, industrial property, near the Oakdale Theater, right off the Merritt Parkway, and put, if you can imagine, I think, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, something like eighty-something, three-bedroom, fifteen, sixteen-hundred-square-foot homes that are, you know, kind of like freestanding condominiums. There's an association that takes care of all the the area around it and the roads. But the people own their homes, and they own, I think, a six-foot strip around the house, and they can plant their own flowers. And it works out great, and it's beautiful. And to our original point, I don't know who Liz has hired, but the people who manage the property and the people who qualify have done a spectacular job. It looks better today than the day she built it. And, you know, so that's really an option. And and there's certainly a market, as Bob can tell you better than I, for what once called starter homes, you know, those those fifteen, sixteen-hundred-square-foot homes.
Yeah, I would agree. Liz did a great job with that, and that was many years ago when pricing was a little different. I think it's very hard to make the numbers pencil out for detached houses right now. They're just more expensive to build. There's also some some issues with septic systems where, you know, if you don't have sewer, you have to do individual septics right now. And we're actually just having some discussions at our meeting with the CAG just a few weeks ago of the possibility of being able to use multiple, have multiple houses or units share a septic system, which makes perfect sense. You can build a six-bedroom house with one septic system. Why can't you build three two-bedroom houses on one septic system? And and the Department of Public Health, actually, Matt, I forget, Paul, Paul, Paul was actually very supportive of that idea. And I think that's a great idea. And that's something, especially for a town like Guilford, where you have such limited municipal services on on the water and sewer side, that you have to really be aware of where these kind of projects can fit in and where you have good soils. And so much of our zoning, and this is a little bit off on a soapbox, but so much of our zoning is based on some arbitrary number, just like the thirty percent on eight thirty G was just an arbitrary number. Why do we have one, two, and three-acre lots? That's how much density somebody decided they wanted in a given town, and it's not just Guilford, it's done everywhere, that they decided this is how many houses we're going to have when we're fully built out, and we don't want any more than that. And it was never done based on science. And, you know, I've always thought that our whole subdivision process should be based on science. And if you have soils that are good, we can get higher density there and be protective of the environment and get more units in those areas. And those areas that have lots of wetlands or shallow rock, the ledge, that needs larger lots to make the septic systems work. And that's how the design should really work. It should be from an engineering design, not just some arbitrary number. And so anything you guys could do to look at those things and try to encourage development on those areas that have good soils, especially when you think about multifamily or higher density, even single-family, is try to utilize those areas where you can. Another opportunity, I think you're going to hear more and more of in the coming years, is the redevelopment of retail strip centers that just aren't really functioning well. And that doesn't mean your primary retail spaces, but I'm sure every town has those little retail spots that somehow developed over the years. Maybe they were prior to zoning, don't really work, don't have enough traffic flow to really be suitable for re for good retail. And those could probably be redeveloped, either it's mixed-use or strictly residential. And I think the next place you're going to see is some office space. And again, you guys might not have a lot of that down in Guilford, but we have way more office space in the state of Connecticut than we'll probably ever need, ever. And some of those things are going to have to get repositioned to something else, and I think residential is an opportunity there, whether it's infilling the existing buildings or tearing them down and repositioning them. And typically, office space, even if you're building something to other adjacent office space, is not such a problem for residential. You know, I understand why we didn't put residential next to industrial steel mills and stuff like that. That made sense way back when. But there's really no harm in having an office building next to a residential neighborhood because all the office workers go home at five o'clock. So that's just another opportunity you guys should be considering and looking at. Maybe you already are.
Forgive me. One of the conversations that we had at the Scrub thing talked about increasing the gallons per day. And I think Sonya set something, Sonya Marine, our town engineer, said something, or not engineer, excuse me, the health director, sent something around. There's a bill currently in, coming out of planning and development, I think, by Senator Needleman that is going to increase the capacity to ten thousand. You know, Bob, you mentioned that a lot of these are arbitrary numbers, right? So and that ten thousand, you know, is is what, a thirty-three percent increase over the current limitation, which is seventy-five hundred? So that starts to add, that starts to help towards density. So if any lobbying needs to be done, Larry, that bill is probably one that we should all be behind.
I I know a little bit about that, Matt. Senator Needleman's put that bill in three years in a row, and it always gets stuck in the turf fight between D E P and D P H. I did a little work on that, though, and found out from D P H that all they would need to regulate the additional projects that would come their way if the the gallon-per-day limit was raised to ten thousand if the gallon per day limit was raised to ten thousand, would be only one more engineer, which, if you know, the state's salary and benefit scale is somewhere between a hundred and a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, which is a rounding error for the state budget. And so I've communicated that to Representative Rojas, the House Majority Leader, who's putting together an omnibus bill. And I think got back some encouraging news that a lot of people, especially builders like Bob, would like to see DPH regulating a lot of it because the red pick feeling that the P is excessive.
Yeah, it's not just the design and approval process, but the ongoing maintenance and reporting that's required by DEP versus Department of Public Health is significantly different. So if we can get that done, that would be a huge benefit. And I think there are some opportunities. David's right, it's been floating around for years. But I think with such a push for affordable housing and housing in general, that maybe it's got a little opportunity this year, more so than it has in the past.
If we wanted to write the best inclusionary zoning section, we could. Who's the person who, who you ask to vet things?
To, to vet? How do you mean?
Well, like, we're, we were, like, so right now, we're proposing perhaps sixteen units as a minimum number, two percent affordable, all over town, anywhere in town. And, and I guess, and we don't really say rental or ownership, but we have stuff in the code about if it's a condo, you need your covenant, you know, presented, you need your affordability plan. We have like a stormwater requirement where we need dated access. We require EV parking. We require covered bus, bike shelters. And I think there's some stuff like that, if we really want this to happen, we need to be very specific about what we want. And I'm wondering if there's a model for inclusionary zoning.
You know, I, I don't, I don't know. And, and, you know, to suggest there is a model is, you know, as you know, towns are different and their needs are different. You know, most towns have started by designating not a townwide ordinance, but they looked at just areas of the town. And I know that Fairfield, for instance, started at ten units, you know, that the inclusionary zoning ordinance would apply to just projects of ten units or more. And they started at ten percent. And now, and they did that around their, their train station area. And then I think they just went to twelve percent. Some of the areas. So, again, you know, they, you know, Mary, if, if I was looking at a model, I would look at Fairfield because it's a town that needed the units, that, where the market rate units will command a good deal of profit for a developer and how they did not carve it in stone. They were flexible and they were open to expanding the areas and increasing their percentage.
And so they've been doing it for ten years and they have like a seventy-foot height limit in fifty units per acre. So I feel like, you know, they're in their TODs. I feel like we don't have a good model. And I'm a little uncomfortable with the way our stuff is now.
Well, yeah, I mean, again, you have to look at where you can do it. You know, Bob's point about, and we're going to have a whole session about this at SCROG in April about strip malls. I mean, you have Route One. I mean, I don't, I don't know what, what the opportunities are along Route One, but that would seem to be, you know, a, a good place to look, you know, whether you can do it around your train station. I realize you have flood issues around there. So, but, but, you know, you know your town best. And, you know, I, I mean, I hate to, you know, sound like I'm passing the buck, but
No, that's good. It's just if we're going to make it mandatory, if we're going to make it mandatory, should, should we restrict the area? I guess that's the nut of the question.
And how do you respect the area?
Like, put it in the incentive housing zone or something, not all over town.
Well,
Because what if you get a rocky site? Or what if you get like a swampy site? And then the developers kind of stuck, you know?
I mean, that's what Old Saybrook did. They did incentive housing zone. And they did it in a bunch of areas in their town center. I mean, you know me, I, I've always liked the idea of incentive housing zone because it's legal spot zoning. You know, it basically, you know, allows you to do it where the developer can make some money and where the land will, you know, will handle it and where the market can work. So I, I think you need to, I mean, anything town-wide can, can deter development in some places. Because a developer like Bob, you know, could say in a certain part of town, well, I could do market rate units here, but I couldn't do an affordable set aside because it just, the deal wouldn't pencil out. And now you lose the market rate units that he would have done there.
I, I have to agree with David a hundred percent. I think you need the flexibility. We've talked about that over and over again today. And an overlay zone is ideal because now you can drop it anywhere, it makes sense. But it doesn't mean it has to be everywhere. And people can choose, you know, I'm thinking of something like, and I, and I know who he is, I don't know him really well. Kenny Horton built those beautiful project right off your green. How could you possibly expect somebody building million, million-dollar units to then also include some units that are going to sell or rent for affordable units? That may be a perfect example where that project may have made sense for him to pay a fee in lieu of, if it was required. Or maybe it's just one that he chooses not to use that overlay zone for the increased density there. But then there may be other places, like I said, that, that may be more appropriate or that you, you want to encourage development to happen. You mentioned a couple of things like bus shelters. Well, are we talking about school kids? Or are we talking about public transportation bus stops? And if it's not on a bus line for public transportation, don't put a, don't require a bus stop. If you're thinking kids, that works if it's a single-family detached project because they're likely to have a lot of children and they're all three-bedroom units. If you're building one and two-bedroom apartments in common hallway-type building, the number of children that are likely to live there, because it's just not the most conducive to that type of environment or lifestyle. You're not going to have a lot of children. My, my townhouse project, all two bedrooms, we might have one child under the age of five in the whole project of thirty-six. I think you have to have to put a bus stop in for when that child grows up. And then they'll move out four years before, within the next four years to a single-family home. And I'll never have anybody living, using that bus stop.
I think, I think I misspoke because I was talking about covered bike storage.
Yeah, and, but, you know, and that, that's fine. Again, if, if it's in an area that would be conducive to biking from that location. And depending on what the traffic flow is, are there bike lanes? Are there places that make sense to bike from? That's appropriate. If you don't think that's probably the place you want to encourage people to bike from because of traffic issues or whatever, maybe that's not the thing to encourage. I also just mentioned, just try not to start stepping on areas that really should be covered by the building code. I, I always get fearful that we, we set regulations and they're there for a long time and things change, right? Now, EV chargers are the big thing and it's probably appropriate. But I don't know if we'll be using EV chargers ten years from now. And how much, you know, maybe we are, maybe we're all going to be driving electric cars. Or maybe we're using fuel cells in our, in our cars. And everybody's laughing at the fact that they have cords hanging out all over these places that nobody plugs into anymore. I don't know what the facts are. I mean, I'm just kind of throwing that out there. But try not to get involved in designs that should just be dealt with, with the building code. And they handle a lot of those kind of issues.
Thank you.
Well, I think I want to be mindful of time here. It's ten minutes after five. Kristi, did you have a question you wanted to get in before we close?
Question, slash, opinion. You know, I've been giving this a lot of thought over, over our discussion on this inclusionary housing. And, and so many questions and, and different facets are there to look about, look at and think about. But I, it occurred to me that if, you know, Farmer Brown up the street decided to sell his property, he has two options. I mean, many more options than that probably. But, you know, he could be selling it as a lot to a developer to put in, you know, housing. And he gets his maximum nut for maybe selling it as a single parcel. Or he could be, you know, selling it plot by plot. And in thinking about how we're developing residential housing in the town of Guilford, stepping back from affordable housing for a minute. You know, every, you could go down the street and you can see all different kinds of housing next to each other. Big houses, little houses, medium houses. And then you see where the developer came in and built, you know, twenty-nine of the same thing. So I'm just wondering what, whether it's, I'm daydreaming or it's feasible to, to begin to think about affordable housing in the context of sort of a cluster neighborhood development. So that you have a mix of housing styles and square footages. And, you know, you have some things that could be starter homes or you could have some multi, like two-family townhouse-type units in there, whatever. But it's a really intentional way of developing parcels. And you would get in that the kinds of economies that you have if you can put, you know, those housings on the same septic system. And so then, and, and have a common well or whatever, however you would do that. But so much of the property that we looked at in the affordable housing zone, which meant having it be close to public transportation, was, was ledge. And that put a huge impediment to developing any of that as affordable housing. And it also had, you know, those big parcels were also multi, you know, multi-million dollar, million dollar, multi-million dollar parcels. They weren't, which in and of itself made the property unaffordable, coupled with the ledge and the water, whatever the land requirements for absorption are and so forth, a double unaffordable, you know, kind of development. So I kind of veer away from development zones because of the type of land that we discovered we have in the most likely favored places for state financing of affordable housing. And, and I, and so looking at the, the rest of Guilford, I thought that having intentional neighborhood development might be, as I've described it, might be a way to go, which would allow somebody to build, you know, big houses and small houses and medium-sized houses and, and, and share the costs. So.
I would encourage you to consider what it is you want the town to look like and how you want it to develop. And then create incentives so that, that farmer or landowner, when they have a choice between dividing it up into large four-acre lots and building McMansions on it or building something more affordable at a little higher density, if you want that, then make sure there's an incentive for them to want to sell that because the value is greater for them there. Because everyone does things for their own personal benefit. So let that farmer benefit or the landowner benefit a little bit by the density. Let the developer make a little more, but only because they're building what it is that you as a town or, you know, the commission decides they want. And you can do it with incentives and encouragement rather than mandating somebody to do something. We'll all follow the money. That's the reality of it. So, so design in such a way that you incentivize us, encourage us to go do those things.
Okay.
Great. Well, thank you, Bob. Thank you, David. Thank you, everybody. Really good discussion. I think, you know, if anything to take away here is incrementalism and flexibility, I think seemed to be the, the way to move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Committee. Oh, thanks, Bob. I'll reach out to the housing committee with the follow-up email and see if we can rally the troops again soon.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.